... meeting, this is our November meeting. Certainly thank you for being here tonight. And if you are in attendance, I'd like to ask you if you please, if you do have a cellphone, please make sure that it's on silence. If you have a pager, please make sure the same, so that we can conduct our business tonight and not be interrupted in any way. At this time, I would like to ask each of you tonight, our invocation will be led by Commissioner Ricky Jones, and then following that, we have the pledge to the flag led by Cub Scout Troop Pack 419. Mr. Gary Bobo is the Cub Master and Den Leader. They're from Ken Rose Elementary School, nine-year-old young men. So we're certainly honored to have them here tonight to present the colors and lead us in our pledge to the flag. So if you would, please stand at this time for the invocation and then the pledge to the flag.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you have given us, and we thank you for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Williamson County and the people of the United States. And we thank you for the liberties that you have given us, the citizens of this great United States. At this time, we need to remember the families of the young men and women at Fort Hood, Texas. These young men and women have given their lives and their service to their country, and at this time, we've lost several of them, and we ask that you be with the families and those people at Fort Hood, and lay a healing hand upon them and be with them, and we ask that you bless them. We ask that you bless us throughout this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young man. This time, we'll have the roll call. If you're here, present, if you'd press your white button, indicate your presence here tonight. Ms. Anderson, if you would, count the roll, please.
I have twenty-two present, two absent. Commissioner Tommy Little and Commissioner Ernie Williams, absent.
I've heard from Commissioner Williams, he's not feeling well tonight, and I have not heard from Commissioner Little, so possibly he's en route on the way, not aware that he's not planning on being here tonight. So approval of the minutes of the regular October 12, 2009 county commission meeting. Each of you got copies mailed, entertain a motion to accept and approve these minutes. Commissioner Brockman, the motion. Commissioner Chalfont, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Introduction, acceptance of highway commission minutes. These were mailed out to you after the highway commission meeting. Entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Cook, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Under the citizens' communication tonight, we have five individuals that have signed up according to our rules. We have allocated fifteen minutes of time to this part of the agenda, and I would ask you to maintain your comments, two to three minutes. When I ask you to stop, if you exceed that, please honor that request. First speaker tonight is from, is Brentford Bulla. If you would, please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and then make your two-minute comments to the board, if you would, please.
My name is Brentford R. Bulla. I reside at forty-seventeen Nut Hatch Drive, Spring Hill, N.C., Tennessee. I would like to make a comment about Dr. Reed. He has been my doctor since I've been needing platelets to keep my health and my strength. I think he's a very good doctor, and it hurts my soul that he cannot practice in Williamson Hospital.
Is it okay if I make a comment?
What's your name?
Dorothy Bulla.
Okay, Ms. Bulla.
I'm his wife.
You are signed up, so I will allow you, go right ahead.
Okay. He came in the emergency room back in January, and Dr. Reed has been his doctor, and he has ministered to my husband as if it were a member of his family. And not to, we live in Spring Hill, and not to be able to go to Williamson Center and have our doctor is very distressing to us. We have to go all the way to Nashville. I'm eighty-three, he's eighty-six. That leaves us, what do we do? We have to make a choice, either change doctors to go to this hospital, or either go in a strange place. We've made nice connections, bonded with a lot of the employees there, and it's just a hardship. He was admitted last week for an emergency surgery. He came out of his bed to be here to speak about this affair. This is a guy that served his country. He was a pilot on an aircraft carrier in World War II. It's not right. And we need an explanation of why we cannot have our doctor at Williamson Center. We've got no, nobody's told us. Either it's a community hospital, or either it's a for-profit hospital. Now, you've got a decision to make, those that are on the board. Which is it gonna be? Which is it gonna be? Are you looking out for the people in the community, or is it money? Money, money. Is that the answer? If it were your doctor, your husband, or your mother, or your father, what would you want done? I'm asking you, what would you want done? How many here are on the board? I'd like to see your hands. What do you think? Is it right? I don't think so. Dr. Reed is a fine doctor, and this is absolutely not right. I know that he goes to extreme in his care, and he goes to all matters to try to find out the root of the problem, regardless of the time or sometimes the expense. I'm just real upset about it, and we need this board to tell us what's going on. It's not right. I don't know if my time's up or not, but my son's here. We have any extra time.
Thank you. Next signed up, Mark Shore.
My name is Mark Shore. Live at four-twenty-two Murfreesboro Road, but I also am the executive director of the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, just want to share with you briefly tonight. We were excited last week to have the governor in the city of Franklin to announce a new initiative called the Tennessee Trails and Byways Program. There will be fifteen of these trails in all ninety-five counties in Tennessee, and Williamson County and Murray County together were the first trail in this new system. I've brought with me brochures, and would put, I put these on the bottom shelf for members of the audience, if they'd like to take one. There's a packet for Commissioners, if you'd like one, take one of these. It's got some information about all the places that we've shown up in the press. We're particularly excited, this was a great partnership. Our total investment from the Bureau was about twenty-five-hundred dollars, and as you can see, it was obviously a much larger program than just a twenty-five-hundred-dollar program with signage, partnerships with four of the governor's cabinet members, and we're just excited to have that here in Williamson County, and wanted to make you all aware of it if you weren't. We did have you on the invitation list, but I understand some of those ended up in spam folders, but we wanted you all to be aware of that, and excited about this new program. A hundred thousand copies of the Old Tennessee Trails brochure have gone out. We're already hearing from retail establishments that it's having an economic impact, which was our goal. So thank you again for your time tonight.
Brad, Brad Bulla?
My name's Brad Bulla, and I appreciate the time and the opportunity. I hope this is the proper forum to address this. I found out I'd be here just a little while ago, so I'm, as my mother mentioned, I'm very concerned, I'm very concerned both for my father and my mother. I've seen them, they, aplastic anemia or mild dysplasia, we're not exactly sure what the problem is, but it's a very mysterious ailment, if any of you are familiar with it. And I'm very concerned that my mother has to drive by William Medical Center, sometimes at two o'clock in the morning to get my dad. This is not a matter of convenience, this is a matter of life and death for my father. Without platelets, he will die. It's just that simple. So I am distressed that she has to transport him now, apparently, to Baptist Hospital when Dr. Reed has shown nothing but exemplary professionalism in his striving to find out what's causing this low-platelet count in my father. Years ago, people just died from this. Now it's keeping my father alive, and he's tried multiple different avenues to try and discern exactly what the problem is. Like, as I mentioned, I hope this is the right forum to address this issue and have our voice be heard. That's simply what we're asking for, is to hear our voice. It's distressing, particularly in this time, I know many of you may have a letter that I wrote, in this time of healthcare being such a concern, right here in Williamson County is a very apropos story of concern for us, that this man who served his country is now having to be shuffled around, and we don't know why, and cannot go to Williamson Medical Center, which is by far the most convenient place for him to get the treatment that he needs, not just as a matter of convenience, but to survive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to request that Dr. William K. Reed, M.D., receive his privileges back to practice medicine at Williamson Medical Center. Dr. Reed has presently has privileges at Centennial Hospital and Baptist Hospital. He has been affiliated with the Vanderbilt Medical Center in both their oncology and hematology departments. He is an internationally recognized physician of hematology and oncology. The British government, after the First Desert War, sent fifty patients who had heavy metal poisoning that they could not take care of to Dr. Reed. All fifty returned healthy, back to their homes and their families in Great Britain. My wife had to postpone back surgery due to being an anemic. Dr. Reed was the only physician out of six able to determine the cause of her anemia, and now it's been corrected, so she can go ahead and have her back surgery. Dr. Reed was also my daughter's oncologist when she was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma at age sixteen. She recently celebrated her tenth year anniversary in remission. I do not understand why a gentleman like Dr. Reed, with his background and his knowledge and his expertise, has lost his privileges and requests that they be returned to him at Williamson Medical Center. Thank you.
Cotton, would you give us your mailing home address?
I'm sorry, eleven thirty-two McDonough Circle, Thompson Station, Tennessee.
Thank you, Sheriff. I will now close the citizens' comments, as they are now completed and brought before you tonight, but as Chairman of this county commission, I would like to state two things very clearly. This body is always open for citizens to come before our group to address concerns, and you've had every opportunity to do that, and you've done it very well tonight. This county commission is not the place for you to address the issues such as the questions that have been raised and asked about certain requests that have been made here tonight. So I would suggest that those of you that are concerned about that particular situation, this would more appropriately be addressed to the hospital and hospital board of directors that operates the hospital, and it's a decision that needs to be discussed and reviewed, if in fact that's your request and your intent to do that. Certainly, we honor your opportunity to be here tonight to furnish this comment, but this is not an issue that this body will take any action upon at all, other than suggest that you seek the appropriate avenue, the appropriate place. With that said, we'll move on then to the communications and messages. Each of you have received information that's been laid in front of you tonight. I would ask you to look at it, the Human Resources Committee meeting that was scheduled for Monday, the sixteenth, has been canceled. You also have a new listing of all the committees of the county commission with all the members appropriately indicated. And then the other thing I'd point to your attention is the administrative elections have, has given you this notice as it relates to the appointment of a political treasurer, so please take a look at this very carefully to make sure that you are in compliance with that. And then we have two late filed resolutions. We have resolution number eleven oh-nine twenty-seven. This is a late filed resolution that each of you should have in front of you. Eleven oh-nine twenty-seven, filed by Commissioner Judy Hayes, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to accept donation of property for the historical village. All of you should have a copy of that at your place. Any objection to hearing this as a late filed resolution this evening? Any objection? I see no objections, so we'll add eleven oh-nine twenty-seven under the Other section of the agenda. And then late filed resolution, eleven oh-nine twenty-eight. Excuse me?
Number twenty-eight does not have a number on it.
Okay. Diane says it didn't have a number on it. I happen to have the number, so it's the one that says, "Resolution of endorsement for the county mayor to solicit requests for proposal for the lease of the old highway building, and to authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement for the property." That resolution, if you don't have the number on it, is eleven dash oh-nine twenty-eight, filed at six-twenty this afternoon, this evening. Any objection to hearing eleven oh-nine twenty-eight? I see no objection, so we'll add that to the agenda.
Several of these committees have changed their meeting times.
Diane points out that several of these committees, you may want to look at the meeting times, because some of them have been adjusted. It looks like most, most of them have been set. Those that were at five or five different times, look like most of those are set at five-thirty. So please note the meeting times for each of those items that are listed there for the committee assignments this evening. I think that's all of the communications and messages. Of course, I would remind each of you that you are invited, and hope each one of you can attend the Veterans Day Parade that will be conducted on Wednesday, November the eleventh, at eleven o'clock, starting at the Veterans Memorial Area. We'll all gather, there'll be a very short and brief ceremony to open the parade, and then the veterans, along with bands and other things of entertainment that day, will be conducted, and we'd ask each of you, if at all possible, to join us for that Veterans Day Parade. Those of us that can walk will walk with the veterans down Main Street. Those of us that can't walk that far can have the opportunity to ride on one of Franklin Trolleys, so certainly, please, make this an opportunity to be there to honor our veterans, and certainly be there to recognize the fact of the contribution that each of them have made to this great country. No other communications or messages. We'll move on to the proclamation of appreciation that Commissioner Chalfont, Hayes, and Lynch
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Commissioner Lynch and Commissioner Hayes to be with us, and as Chairman of the Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee for the commission, I really take a great deal of pride in, in making this presentation to outstanding service on behalf of our law enforcement within the county. If I might have Detective David Beard, Detective Melissa Colvin, and Lieutenant Tony Phillips come forward, and as they're, as they're coming forward, to the proclamation of appreciation. Whereas Williamson County is fortunate to have numerous individuals who have chosen careers in various law enforcement fields, and on a daily basis, these individuals are committed to protecting and serving the public safety and welfare of our citizens, and from time to time, there are those who would take advantage of others by breaking and entering facilities, vehicles, and private residences in an effort to rob them of their belongings, and whereas those who would be victimized by said thieves are often left feeling despaired, angry, and saddened that the, that they may never recover their personal property, and whereas on August, in August two thousand nine, a private county residence was broken into with the subsequent loss of thousands of dollars worth of personal property, including several antique guns. And whereas Williamson County Sheriff's Department detectives, David Beard, Melissa Colvin, and Lieutenant Tony Phillips, were assigned to this case and were diligent in their, their search to apprehend the responsible individuals and recovery of the stolen items, and whereas three days after the Williamson County burglary, suspects were arrested for a rash of burglaries in Williamson and Davidson Counties, and a follow-up search of their resident, residents uncovered all of the weapons and personal property taken from Williamson County homes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session this ninth day of November two thousand nine, hereby express our appreciation to Detectives Beard, Colvin, and Phillips for their due diligence in the burglary case, and commend them for their professionalism and compassion shown in the affected family throughout the investigation. In witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the great seal of the county of Williamson to be affixed at Franklin this ninth day of November two thousand nine. Signed, Commissioner Judy Hayes, Commissioner Clyde Lynch, Commissioner Burke Chalfont, Rogers C. Anderson, County Mayor, Williamson County.
I also would like to, to have the, two of the supposed victims come forward. It's Mr. and Mrs. Fount Smothers. One of the items stolen and which was recovered was a Revolutionary War musket belonging to Fount's great-great-great-grandfather, and it was, it was a Crockett rifle. And we wanted just to recognize your efforts, and we have a proclamation for each of you that we really appreciate very much. And I'm sorry, Sheriff, I didn't ask you to come, come forward. But we, but we appreciate it very much, and thank you so much.
Burke, Commissioner Chalfont, Commissioner Chalfont?
Yes, sir.
If I could get you, Commissioner Hayes and Lynch, to step up here in the pit, and also ask, David, Melissa, you guys come on up. Sheriff, get up here, Mr. Hugh, where you can get a good photograph of them lined up straight, instead of shooting around that pole. Get, get the sheriff up here, and y'all, you make a nice photograph of them. And then Sheriff, if you want to make-
They'll shorten out, if you come over here.
David, we'll let you get over there, so, there we are. Okay.
My theory is, don't tell me how well I did tell my boss.
Sheriff, if you want to make any comment, we'll, we'll give you that opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, naturally you know how proud I am of these three outstanding investigators. I want you to know, and Mr. Smothers appreciates you making the recommendation that they be recognized. I just want you to know, this is an example of the quality of personnel you have, serving you every day with the Sheriff's Department, who put their lives on the line for you and the citizens of Williamson County every day. Thank you for this recognition.
Thank you very much for your service to the county and for stepping up and doing a wonderful job. Moving on, under reports of county offices, department heads, County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'll ask Mr. Coleman to give us the financial snapshot of the county.
Mr. Chairman, have a limited report tonight. We've been trying to rush our reports to get them to just as quick as possible in the last couple of months, and this being an early meeting, the ninth of the month, our books are not closed yet, so we don't have your budget report for the month, and we have not received a report from the Cool Springs Marriott for October. We did get late today, the privilege tax report, which I believe is in front of you, and also the chart that goes along with that. And just briefly, I'll point out, if you look at the top of the chart, the adequate schools, facilities tax, it's at the lowest point in October we've been in the three years we've been collecting that, and there are only three months left- been collecting that, and there were only three months last year that were lower, and they were November, December, and January. So continue to take a look at that. And then on the bottom of the chart, we have the Schools, Rec, Highway, and Fire Privilege Tax, and again, you can see that it's at a low in October for the last, actually, six years, and just barely above November and January of last year. So we keep looking for that upturn, then improvement in those housing figures, and although we've seen some indications, we just have not seen a trend that would indicate we're coming out of that at this point.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? See none? Mayor?
Thank you, David. Commissioners, I want to touch on a couple of resolutions that you have in your file tonight. One of them is something new that we've never tried before. That's the resolution that is, we're asking for your approval on tonight of trying to solicit, do RFPs for grant riders in our county. In dealing with the grassland situation, it became pretty apparent to us that there may be some folks in Washington that could help us out with some grants, but at the price that some of the legal firms were wanting to charge, specifically ten thousand dollars a month in all expenses, we could not afford to go that. So we're going to reverse the trend and do an RFP and see if people are willing to set a fee and then pay, we would pay that fee based on their participation of actually getting the dollars to us. So this has not been tried, and we'll try this. The other one, late this afternoon, and we do apologize that this did not have any opportunity to go through some of the committees, is the leasing of the old highway building. As many of you know, first part of December, we should be in the new Highway Department building. We'll be having ribbon cutting when all those dates are set. We'll get this information out to you. What do we do with the old building? In talking to the road superintendent today and along with some other folks, we feel that there may be someone through an RFP process that we could lease or rent the building, the old highway building that's sitting on Columbia Avenue, out to someone that would like to rent it, and under the Fifty-seven Purchasing Act, which Bobby and legal staff have looked at, that we can do this. Again, we've not done this. It is our intent to do this for two or three years, and at that time, that'll give some settling in the marketplace. Hopefully, we'll be able to see some revenue, and we can find a permanent solution to this. The road superintendent is fine with it. If there are questions here about that, I'll be glad to address them, but legally, you all on it, not the Highway Department, when this was purchased back in the late forties and fifties, it was the county that bought the property and built the building, not the Highway Department. That's why we're able to do this. That's ended my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of the mayor? I see none. Thank you, sir. Williamson County Schools, Dr. David Heath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a number of resolutions tonight regarding the opening of new schools, as well as a request for funds for the new Trinity Elementary School, relief for Trinity Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity the Commission gave us last week to speak to the Budget and Education Committee and try to answer questions about our numbers and needs, and if there are more questions tonight, I'll be glad to try to answer those. Thank you.
Any questions of Dr. Heath? Anybody? Commissioner Walton, please.
Yeah, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Heath. It's my understanding this will be the last time in this capacity you'll be in front of us, and I want to commend you on a job well done.
Thank you very much. Any other committees wishing to report? Commissioner Mills, please.
I'm not on the committee, Mr. Chairman, but I think that we need to recognize Ms. Brumlin with the Department of Health. When you look at the number of people who are lining up to get the H1N1 shot, and they're standing in line for all this length of time, and when you go to the Health Department, you don't stand in line at all. I took my grandchild the other day, and we were right in and right out because they know how to line people up and do that, and I think she and her staff really needs to be commended for the wonderful work that they are doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Becky, for all that you're doing. Anyone else? Moving on to the elections and appointments, County Commission, the Beer Board, three-year term expiring eleven, two thousand and twelve. Northeast Section Representative Charlie Fox III. Nomination, Charlie Fox III.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the motion. Commissioner Green, the second. Is Mr. Fox here? I see Mr. Fox. All in favor? Mr. Charlie Fox, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. Notaries, you've received a list of notaries that were sent out in the packet for the new applications, as well as the renewals. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. Consent agenda, you have a consent agenda that's attached here this evening. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Walton, Commissioner Brockman, the second. Consent agenda is on the board. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, and zero, no. Consent agenda unanimously adopted. Resolution eleven-oh-nine-one, resolution amending the two thousand and nine-ten general purpose school budget, one million eight hundred and eight thousand dollars for medical dental insurance claims from undesignated funds, and additional state revenue. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston, school board report, ten yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Five yes, zero no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero, I'm sorry, four-four-zero against.
Thank you. Purchasing and insurance?
Five-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith, please.
This is a resolution to add additional funds for medical dental insurance claims. Claims are running higher than anticipated, not just for the school system, but countywide. You'll see another resolution in your packet regarding this for other parts of the county, but funds need to be added to the claims fund for the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions of Commissioner Smith on this resolution? See none? If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution eleven-oh-nine-two, a resolution appropriating the two thousand and nine-ten general purpose school budget, sixty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars from unappropriated fund balance to purchase additional textbook kits. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock, the second. School Board, ten yes, zero no. Education?
Five yes, zero no.
Thank you. Budget?
Four-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
These science kits are somewhat supplanting a textbook for each individual child to take home. The kits were provided one per grade level. It is a more economical and efficient way to teach science. However, having teachers across a grade level share a kit or several kits didn't prove to be effective, and the decision was made to provide those kits for each teacher, so that's what these funds are for.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Eleven-oh-nine-three, resolution amending the two thousand and nine-ten general purpose school fund by five hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars from unappropriated GPS fund balance for startup costs and a principal for new South Middle School. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. School Board, ten yes, zero no. Education?
Four yes, zero no, one abstain.
Budget?
Four-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
These are funds for the new South Middle School to hire a principal in order to get things prepared for the opening of that school in August.
Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor of eleven-oh-nine-three, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution eleven-oh-nine-four, resolution amending the two thousand and nine-ten general purpose school fund by three hundred thousand three hundred and seventy dollars from unappropriated GPS fund balance for startup costs and a principal for new South Spring Hill area elementary school. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. School Board, ten yes, zero no. Education?
Four yes, zero no, one abstain.
Thank you. Budget?
Four-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Now, once again, this is for hiring a principal to get the school ready to open, including funds for materials to stock the school, to have it ready for opening in August.
Any questions? Question? Who's got a question? Commissioner Lynch, please.
Enough money to open these schools. I don't mean to disrespect nobody, but that's not even close to what it's going to take to open all these schools. Something's been left out some way or another because it's going to be a whole lot more money than that. Of course, I'm proud to see the low number, but we don't need to fool ourselves.
You're not suggesting we increase that number?
No, no.
Okay. It was pointed out today that heading on this says for the new South Spring Hill area school, it's really the north. It's north of Spring Hill, it's not south of Spring Hill. I don't know where that name came from, but it's the-
Part of the county.
It's South Williamson County and North Murray County, I guess, but- Any other comments on the Commissioner Smith, please?
I was just going to point out that some of the equipment that may have been included in other projects, in the case of these two, this one and the one following, some of that equipment, playground equipment, for example, was included in the construction budget.
Very good. So noted, because that will be a consideration as we go forward. If you're in favor of resolution eleven-oh-nine-four, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero no. Unanimous adoption of eleven-oh-nine-four. Eleven-oh-nine-five, resolution amending the two thousand and nine-ten general purpose school fund by three hundred and five thousand three hundred and seventy dollars from unappropriated GPS fund balance for startup costs and a principal for new West Franklin Elementary School. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Committee report, school board, ten yes, zero no. School Board, education?
Four yes, zero no, one abstain.
Budget Committee?
Four-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
This is similar to the other two resolutions, just preparing to get the new school open.
Any questions, comments on eleven-oh-nine-five? See none? In favor of eleven-oh-nine-five, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution eleven-oh-nine-six, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners' approval of an intent to fund up to twenty million eight hundred thousand dollars for a new Trinity area elementary school. Commissioner Smith is recognized.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, Russell Little, the second. School Board, ten yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Six yes, one no.
Budget, please.
Four-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
At our joint education and budget committee, I guess, last week's when it was, many of you were here, and there was much discussion with the school district staff about the population of students in various areas, one in particular in the Trinity area, the overpopulation of that school, and the lack of options that exist for addressing that overpopulation due to, there's just not any other good solutions as far as other schools where those children could be moved to, and I think many of you had the opportunity to ask questions about it and get answers, I think, that were satisfactory to most folks, and I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Parr is recognized.
I will support this resolution, but I just want to say a few things on it. When I started here not so many years ago, we were five hundred million in debt in principal and interest. It's up to five ninety now in just a few years. This tax on another twenty-some million. It's getting to be a point where I think we're now starting to develop some excess capacity in the school system, especially once we get this school built. We'll have built an elementary school in the south, the west, and now the east. I was curious to see whether there was any trend in the number of students coming into school. So I looked back, and I just did a cursory glance at what years were the biggest privilege tax. Happened to be two thousand four through two thousand seven. So I looked at the enrollment figures now for the schools that we got this summer, and when you trace back to three highest years now, elementary, when you trace those back to when did they start, and they're now in third, fourth, and fifth grade, they started in two thousand four through two thousand seven, and the numbers beyond, before that, second grade, first grade kindergarten, have gone down. So I really think after this school, we really need to seriously look at, how do we stretch our existing facilities before we build anymore? Because I think we've reached a point now where unless we see the growth really start back up, and we all see the sobering numbers on the privilege stacks today, that they keep dropping, not going up, that we really need to think about it before we build anymore after this one. But I will support this school, and I hope you will too. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Parr. Commissioner Greer is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Parr. I'm very concerned that last month, we approved a bond issue for eighty-one point three million dollars, and we're adding another twenty million. At some point, we do have to stop borrowing money because all this does have to be paid back. And unfortunately, unlike the federal government, we can't print more money. I'm undecided about how I'm going to vote on this. I do believe there is a need, and I appreciate Dr. Heath making every effort to utilize the schools that we do have effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair recognizes Commissioner Russell Little.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to also commend Dr. Heath for the joint budget education committee meeting that we had last Monday. The school board, Dr. Heath specifically provided us with information, the school system. Leslie, thank you for what you've done. They answered a lot of questions for us. We were very concerned about the money, the funding, how all this was going to go down, specifically the needs and the growth trends. So we're taking a tough look at this. They are doing their job of looking hard at these numbers. This specific situation, we're firmly convinced is needed. There's no doubt in our mind, otherwise we would not have supported this. The funding for this, as we look going forward, this is an intent-to-fund resolution. We're hoping that we don't need the money. We won't have to go to the market until next year's budget for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Little. Any other questions or comments on this resolution before we vote? I see none. Resolution eleven-oh- Resolution eleven oh nine... Commissioner Wilson, you're not quick enough.
I wasn't quick enough, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to say I do support this, and I was at that joint meeting and did have a lot of questions answered at that time, of which I did ask some questions, and I felt much more secure with having that dialogue. So I just want to say I do support it, and my husband is a past Trinity Elementary School person who graduated from there, so I do support this issue. They've got some major problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? See none. Eleven oh nine six is up for adoption. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution eleven oh nine nine. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten community development budget by forty thousand dollars to provide funding for consultants to update the traffic shed methodology as a part of the update to the Williams County zoning ordinance. Revenues to come from local government investment pool funds. Commissioner Little and Walton?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Russell Little, second by Commissioner Walton, to approve this resolution. Budget Committee report?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioners?
Attached to this resolution is an amendment to get the funding sources correct for this, and I'd like to go ahead and offer that amendment. It's attached to your paperwork.
Please, sir, go right ahead.
I'd like to move to amend eleven oh nine nine as attached.
All of you see the attachment that Commissioner Little is referring to. It's on the back. Is there a second?
Second.
To the amendment, Commissioner Walton, the second, to the amendment to eleven oh nine nine, basically changing, giving different titles and updating that information. Any discussion on the motion to amend? I see none. If you're in favor of the amendment, press the yes button.
What is being amended? I can't see the difference, but I'm not...
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
David, help me out here.
I think it's changing the accounts, the amounts are identical.
Just the account number, not the shed number. Nothing has changed except the account numbers, I understand it, so...
Any other questions? The amendment, we'll vote first. Eleven oh nine nine is amended. If you're in favor of the amendment, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote on the amendment?
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes. The amendment is unanimously adopted. Resolution eleven oh nine nine as amended is now up for consideration and discussion. Any discussion on eleven oh nine nine as amended?
Mr. Chairman, give me a... Give a brief description here.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The only thing we did was just pass the amendment. This is coming through the zoning department, hence we're raising Jack's sponsorship on this resolution, and we're updating the zoning or the shed boundaries for our transportation. We're operating under some old information, and monies were taken from different traffic sheds according to the amount of their contribution to this. That's the reason for all the little bit different amounts of money going in there. But this is the total cost of this is forty thousand dollars, and it's to be funded by the monies within all these traffic shed funds.
And it was requested by some of you at the committee meeting for the traffic shed map, and that's attached. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to ask those at this time. Commissioner Wilson, you have a question?
I'd just like to ask that we get a little bit better copy, possibly. I couldn't read it very well. Not tonight. Another time.
Need a bigger copy, Commissioner Wilson's glasses. Don't focus it small. Our arm's not long enough. Anything else on eleven oh nine nine as amended? I see nothing. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes, zero no. Unanimous adoption as amended, eleven oh nine nine. Eleven oh nine twelve. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten general sessions budget by twenty-one hundred and sixty dollars. Revenues to come from probation fees. Commissioner Shalfont, please. Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee report?
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation?
This is money to be used for evaluation and testing, drug testing expenses.
Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont on eleven oh nine twelve? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Eleven oh nine thirteen. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a grant agreement and appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten capital projects budget by five hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents for emergency management equipment. Revenues to come from homeland security grant funds. Commissioner Shalfont? Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee report?
Law Enforcement Public Safety, six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This is receipt of grant money coming in from Homeland Security.
Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont? I see none. If you're in favor of eleven oh nine thirteen, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Eleven oh nine fourteen. Resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the creation and implementation of a DUI court program and amending the two thousand and nine-ten general sessions budget by fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and forty cents. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Shalfont? Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Human Resources Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont?
This is also a grant that has applied from the state, and the person, the reason it went before the Human Resources is that it does include an additional person, but that person is to be notified that if this grant is not renewed, that position is removed.
Okay. Other questions? Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont? This did go before those three committees, and any questions, anything further? If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution eleven oh nine fifteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten general debt service fund by an amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-three cents for costs associated with settlement relative to property adjacent to Independence High School. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston. Education Committee?
Five yes, zero no.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith, please.
When Independence High was finished, there was some funds from the project left over that was eventually returned to the debt service fund. Since that time, however, there's continued to be a dispute over a parcel of land associated with that project, a dispute with the adjacent property owner. And in working through that, there will be additional monies required to pay the property owner to acquire that piece of land. And it seemed to make sense to pull that money back in from the debt service fund and use that as part of that payment. So that's just shifting this seven hundred twenty-two thousand plus back from the debt service fund to make it available for settlement purposes in this case.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Hayes?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Smith a question?
Yes, please.
Steve, will this be enough to take care of the debt? Is there going to be excess money, or how is this going to even out?
That is a possibility, is my understanding. I'll defer to staff, Dr. Heath or Leslie, on that issue.
This is basically the settlement, I suppose you might say, of the condemnation lawsuit on the back portion of that property. We began those proceedings back in two thousand and one, and the landowner at that time just stopped the negotiations, and they sat for six years without any movement, no discussion, and then all of a sudden they were raised again this past fall. So we don't know what the result will be. If it's not settled by agreement, then it'll go to court, so...
Anything else? Commissioner Hayes?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Parr, please, you're recognized.
So we're not acquiring more land? This is just to pay off money that we never paid him before? Or was it just a dispute over what the cost is, and we just never paid him for the property?
No. We paid a portion for the property in a condemnation lawsuit. You pay the appraised value upfront, and that amount was paid. This is the basic, all the issues that surround the condemnation lawsuit that were never resolved. He's been paid the appraised value for the land. It's the issue of in condemnation, he may ask for more value or damages to land, and that's what's the difference, is what we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? If you're in favor of ten oh nine fifteen, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Does anybody vote that wishes to vote? Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution eleven oh nine fifteen is adopted. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten sheriff's office budget by eighteen fifty-five. Revenues to come from sexual offender registry reserve. Commissioner Shalfont? Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Walton, the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont?
This is no new funds. It's coming out of the sexual offenders' reserve, and it's for equipment to continue the monitoring.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Shalfont? I see none. Eleven oh nine sixteen is up for adoption. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, the no button. Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes, zero no. Unanimous adoption of resolution sixteen. Resolution eleven oh nine nineteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten solid waste sanitation budget by fifty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste sanitation fund balance and authorizing the county mayor to expend funds for repairs to the material recovery center. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Property Committee report? Solid Waste Board report?
Four, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Did this go before the Property Committee?
It did.
Mr. Hancock?
I'd like to offer an amendment, please, sir.
So this did not go to the Property Committee? Okay. If it didn't, then we, since we don't have a report. I thought it did, but maybe not.
I thought it did. Commissioner Hancock?
Okay, so let's... The report then from Property Committee will be deemed, based on what's been reported tonight, this did not go to the Property Committee. So you have an amendment, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the amount to one hundred and ten thousand dollars, and I do have an explanation.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Brockman to amend the amount to one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Commissioner Hayes, I'll allow you to explain your amendment.
Thank you, sir. First, Lewis is here to offer any detail that you need, but as the resolution states, when the initial inspection was made, the former tenants were still there, so it was hard to get in and evaluate exactly what the needs for the material recovery would be needed, what would be needed till they were completely out and we could take a good look. Their contract was up. It was rebed. We have a new summerall group that started in November the first. Upon looking not only at the building repairs, but some of the equipment, it was evaluated that it would take one hundred and ten thousand dollars to put it in the operational mode that we needed to have for our recycling program. Lewis has a detailed list of how that would be used, for any questions that you might have, but... And we will make every effort to recover any amount that we can justify and would be appropriate to do so, but we feel like it will take the one hundred and ten thousand dollars to make it operational.
Commissioner Hayes, based on my understanding of what's here, the last whereas is you indicated that we will seek reimbursement for the cost. This is actually damage that was done to the facility by the Clean Earth people before they left, and it's our expectation that this will be repaired and reimbursed to the county by Clean Earth. That's the plan?
Well, that will certainly be looked into. Some things are just a matter of just wear and tear and the age of the building. It will be looked into as to what part might have been done by former owners and what part might not have been. Wear and tear is a critical thing when you're having heavy equipment, but everything that's appropriate to be looked at through our county attorneys will certainly be done so.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Hancock, please.
Chairman, I stand corrected. This did go before the committee, and it was unanimous. Everybody was there voting for it. I apologize. I had the wrong one up here. I was looking at it. I don't have my name on it.
So we had unanimous adoption with the Property Committee, which there's, what, seven folks? So seven yes and zero no. Thank you very much, Hancock. Get that.
I had a senior moment there. I understand that very clearly. I resemble that fact.
Anything else on eleven oh nine eighteen? There's no further comments or questions? If you're in favor of eleven oh nine eighteen, press the yes button. Shoot, we're voting on the amendment, to amend it to one hundred and ten thousand. Vote on the amendment. Eleven oh nine is amended to one hundred and ten thousand. If you're in favor of the amendment, press the yes button.
There we go.
Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
The amendment is unanimously adopted, so we're voting on eleven oh nine eighteen as amended with the new amount, one hundred and ten thousand dollars as amended. Any other discussion on eleven oh nine eighteen as amended? I see none. Press the yes button if you're in favor. No button if you're not in favor. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes is amended and approved, unanimously adopted to one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Resolution eleven oh nine nineteen.
Thank you.
Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and nine-ten public transportation budget by one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Revenues to come from grant funds and fees and authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for safety and traveler information system. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little, please.
These are federal grant funds that are available for the TMA, through TMA, for the van ride program to purchase automatic vehicle locators, equipment to tie in with the GPS system so they can know where these vans are.
Very good. Any questions of Commissioner Little on... Any questions of Commissioner Little on number 19? I see none. If you're in favor, Resolution 11-09-19, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Unanimous adoption. 11-09-20. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Parks and Recreation budget by $3,650. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Walton II. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Six-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
We see these resolutions come up from time to time. This is simply revenues coming in to meet certain expenses from donations.
Questions of Commissioner Little, 11-09-20? I see none. If you're in favor, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Everybody voted who wishes to vote? Record of vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Unanimous adoption of 11-09-20. 11-09-21. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 County Clerk's budget by $1,000. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills II. Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
This is the use of fees for the county clerk's office to purchase equipment.
Questions of Commissioner Little? See none. All in favor of 11-09-21, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Unanimous adoption. 11-09-22. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Parks and Recreation budget by $13,443. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills II. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Six-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
These are donations from various athletic associations in order to meet the official expense for athletic events.
Very good. Questions of Commissioner Little? I see none. If you're in favor of 11-09-22, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Everybody voted who wishes to vote? Commissioner Walton? Thank you. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. 11-09-23. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 Clerk and Master Chantry Court budget by $7,500. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills II. Budget Committee report, please.
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation?
The Office of Clerk and Master for the Chantry Court assesses fees for certain transactions, and these fees are being used for office equipment.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Little? If you're in favor of 11-09-23, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution is unanimously adopted. 11-09-25. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 medical insurance by $411,500 for all funds. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Hester II. Purchasing and Insurance Committee?
Five-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little, please.
This is the companion resolution to the very first one we had tonight, brought to you by Commissioner Smith for the education, their end of our self-insurance fund. This is the department's, the county general's, solid waste sanitation and highway fund in order to build up our medical insurance fund backup.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Little? I see none. 11-09-25 is up for consideration. If you're in favor of this, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Commissioner Chalfont, please. There we go. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. 11-09-26. Resolution of endorsement for the county mayor to solicit requests for proposals for grant-riding services, to authorize the mayor to execute a service agreement and to amend the 2009-10 county mayor's budget by an amount not to exceed $200,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Little, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills II. Purchasing and Insurance Committee?
Five-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little, please.
This is the resolution that Mayor Anderson remarked in his opening remarks concerning going out to bid, looking for somebody to do some grant-riding for us. It's handy for us to have these funds on hand in case a grant comes through that we have this available. Trying something new.
Commissioner Perry, you have the floor, sir.
I like the idea of trying something new. But I would ask the mayor to maybe come back and update us every once in a while on what the result of this was, how much we've spent, and how much funding we've secured from it. And I just appreciate that, and I'm sure he would. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to address a question of the mayor, if I might. Or Commissioner Little, if he can answer that one. First question is, how did we arrive at 200,000?
How did we arrive at the 200,000?
If my understanding is right of how we're doing this, it's just a number out of the air? Is that right?
Just a number. You know, I figured...
Have them available.
Yeah, I figured attorneys won't let us use the word "commission," but I'm sure they'll figure out a way to get around it and call it a fee. And so, I figured if somebody comes in with a million or $2 million grant, then I've got some money to pay them for the services that they offered.
Okay. And a follow-up question to that. I'm aware of a lot of other municipalities have hired full-time staff to do this. Have you investigated that? And is that a possibility of being through the news?
It may be. We have, as you know, we have one individual that's doing it in our office. But when you're dealing with grants, what we've come to find out on the grant processes is that you've almost got to have specialization. You've got to have the contacts up in Washington to figure out all of this. These hoops you have to jump through. We have another little problem that we've got a hiring freeze on, and it may be something that we look at. We may not get any bidders on this either, but I'm hoping we will. It's not out of the picture, but I have not looked at it in terms of a full-time person.
And one more follow-up question, if I might. I love the way you're going after this. This is a great idea, to do it that way. But don't go backwards and offer anybody any expenses on anything.
Oh, no.
No.
No, this will be...
That's a recipe for disaster.
Well, when you do your RFP, Leslie Mitchell will draft it up in such a way we'll know what all of our costs are. And that's kind of what happened in the four of you over here in the Grassland area. You know, they came in beating, you know, saying they could do this and do that, then when they go back home, they write this $10,000 a month fee, plus all expenses. Most of us would like to have a job like that. I'm just not willing to pay for it.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Smith, please.
Question answered. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the mayor said it was sort of cash-on-delivery. When you present the money, then we'll consider paying the fee. Anything else on 11-09-26? I see none. If you're in favor of 11-09-26, press "yes" button. Opposed, you "no" button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. And zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 11-09-10. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to accept the transfer of real property from the Williamson County Board of Education, commonly known as the old Nolansville Elementary School, to be used for a public purpose. Commissioner Green? Commissioner Russell Little II. Parks and Rec Committee report?
Six-four, zero against.
Thank you. Property Committee?
Seven-four, zero against.
Seven-four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, this is transferring the school property in Nolansville, which is referred to, well, this is the former Nolansville Elementary School, because we get confused when we talk about old schools over there. But this is transferring the property from the Education Department to the county. And that building is presently being used. The old rec facility, which was on that same site, has been closed for safety reasons. And we've moved the senior citizens over to the elementary school. And we've moved the scouts to the elementary school. And presently, there's a church that was leasing. Part of the old rec center is now in that school at the present time. And you'll also notice in here, on this, on page two, there's a diagram of the school. And there are six classrooms up there at the top that are outlined. And those would be still utilized by the school system to store some of their facilities for some of the access chairs, equipment, and what have you that they have. So, recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Green on this resolution? Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a plan to do more with this school in terms of public use? And perhaps Parks and Rec would be overseeing?
Yes. That's definitely part of the plan that we had at the time. I saw the opportunity there. There's a facility that can be used. And in trying to work on that, we've kind of looked at some future funding for that. The town of Nolansville has put up a million dollars towards converting that into a Parks and Rec facility, with a wellness center, senior citizen center, what have you.
The Nolansville has pledged a million?
Yes. But we have, if the money becomes available, we'd be glad to get started. And that's where we're at right now. No, I tell you, when the school system utilized that, and when the Parks and Recreation Committee took over that, we had lots of folks out there cleaning up. And the place is spick and span right now. And I believe the gym floor has been refurbished. And that will be utilized as part of the Parks and Recreation, as the basketball program.
And then, the other building that's not being used because of safety reasons?
Right now, we are looking at a, possibly, the Nolansville Historic Committee in Nolansville is looking to restore that building because, to give you a little history on that building. In the 1930s, two women got together in one of the school sites in Nolansville, and the Department of Education said, "You give us a site, we'll build you a school." They got a site, and a school was built. The gym, if you're familiar with that, was, used to be a separation center down on Sidco Drive in the military. When they got through with it, I don't know what they paid for it, but the men of Nolansville went down there, tore that building apart, brought it back out there, and put it back together. Some of those people who did that are still alive, that actually got out there and did all that labor. So, there's a great interest in having that building restored. Speaking of that, I think we're looking at a short-term lease initially to the Nolansville Recreation Group to give them an opportunity to start a restoration of that building.
But we still have ownership of it.
Well, that was all part of this transfer. That whole complex right there would belong to the school system. And that's part of this 15 acres that was transferred over.
Okay. Thank you for the history.
Any other? Commissioner Davis, you're recognized, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly support the buildings being used. And I hate to have any building sit around. See?
Go ahead.
I hate to see buildings not used at all. But what I prefer to see when we do something like this is a plan for where we're going to go. Commissioner Brockman asked the first question I had, what about the old building? The next question is, what about the new building? Not what some people are looking at. What I'd really rather see is, here's what the plan is, and here's how much it's going to cost. Because I imagine we will be seeing another resolution for, here's some contribution, here's, we've got a plan. And it's only going to cost us a few million dollars to refurbish the building for this next use.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm for this. Don't get me wrong.
No, no. I would like to fill you in a little bit. We have plans. Doug's had plans on the wall showing what we'd like to do to this building.
I know, but I'd like to see it as part of what we're voting on, so we know what we're doing.
Yeah, well, there's, and it was like $4 million to do this. Okay? It's going on hold naturally, because we've got other things on hold at the present time for lack of funds. And that's what we're working on.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know about the plan too, but mostly because I read it in the paper. But I'd rather go through the committee process, instead of come to us later, "Well, it's all planned out. We've already agreed to this." We've been down that road before. And when we take property without a full plan, sometimes we end up with a mistake. And we end up with buildings not being properly utilized. And we have some of that on the rolls right now, which has cost us a lot of money and have nobody in it. And I'm thinking of some buildings at BGA when I say that, for example. So, I'd rather really see a plan all the way down the pike, so we know exactly what's coming, even if we haven't funded it. But at least the plan part. Because I've seen nothing officially, but I've heard a lot about it. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions on this resolution? Let me just focus, if I can a bit. Commissioner Green is talking about things into the future as it relates to the rec center. But the primary purpose of our taking this action tonight is to, of course, accept ownership so that we can respond to the Nolansville Historical Society that fully intends to, and I can't speak for the mayor, but it's his intent to put together a short-term lease that gives them the opportunity to have two full years, I'm talking about the old, old, old building, although it was built in the '40s, to come back to the county commission and say, "Here's our plan. Here's what we're going to do." If they can't do anything in two years, then that property resorts back to our control and interest. And we're only talking about the building. We're not leasing the parking spaces, the ball fields. All of that's under the jurisdiction of Mr. Hood to work that through. And all this is doing is to be responsive to a group of individuals in Nolansville, similar to College Grove at the Archatorium, and really similar to the Dan German Hospital here in Franklin. We have an opportunity to allow a community to step forward and take some action to restore a piece of property that has intrinsic value to them that some of us might not understand. So, we're giving them a two-year period, once that lease is put together, to show us the plan. Here's how they're going to fund it. If they don't do anything in two years, then that lease expires, and we take it back over. That's the old, old building, not the old school. So it's like the jail, you know, the old jail, old, old, and the old, old jail, but that's the main purpose in this, is getting the clear title to all the property in our hands, and then I think it's our intent that the mayor will be bringing back. Councilor Cook, I think you're going to be preparing a lease agreement that we will take a look at in January to consider leasing that old property for two years to that group. So that's what this is all about. Anything else on 110910? If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. 110911, resolution making corrections and assessments for 2007 taxes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, move for approval.
Commissioner Greer the second. Tax Study Committee report.
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Four-four, zero against.
Explanation, please.
Yes, these are records from the trustees' office regarding assessments, 2007 tax assessment that have changes, and it is to our advantage, and that is listed. If there are any questions, I can answer them.
Questions of Commissioner Wilson. I see none. If you're in favor of 110911, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously accepted. Resolution 110917, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into rental agreement for space in the factory at Franklin for the Living Green Expo 2010. Commissioner Hayes.
For approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the second. Solid Waste Board.
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes, please.
First, I will say there's no new money asked for in this. Last August, we were very successful with our first Living Green Expo. It was held at the factory. We had some 55 vendors from those that encouraged Living Green. We had a cross-section from retail to marketing, and everyone who promoted saving energy. We had hybrid cars. It was just very successful. We estimated we had about 2,000 people visiting. It was culminated with the Speaker, Judge Harry Potter from Memphis, who was one of the greatest environmental judges. So it was a very great day, so successful, in fact, that our vendors are already wanting to sign up for next year. We can arrange, and the factory is available, but as you know, they are in high demand. So we need to sign a contract that we do want the factory, and we cannot sign a contract without this commission's approval. So the mayor needs to be able to enter in that contract. We will be having money that will come from the vendors and from sponsorships. So we're asking for no tax dollars.
Any questions of Commissioner Hayes on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor of 110917, press the yes button. Opposed, your no. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. 110924, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into a participation agreement with the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County for the provision of sewer services to the Nolansville Fire Hall. Commissioner Green.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Wilson. Property Committee report.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. Law Enforcement Committee.
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green, please.
Yes, we were going with the idea of putting an additional bay on the Nolansville Farm Hall, but we come to find out that the alternate lime field would be right where that building was going to be constructed, therefore, we could not build it, and we came to a situation where it's necessary hookup with Metro Sewer, which, as this resolution will, as explained in there, for a maximum cost of $50,000, and working with Metro Sewer Services, we can get this done and solve our problem.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Green. Commissioner Perry, you're recognized, sir.
If I can ask a question, Mr. Commissioner Green. So you are going to put the additional bay on the fire hall then? Okay.
Anything further? 110924 is up for consideration. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Late File Resolution, 110927, resolution to authorize the county mayor to accept donation of property for the Historical Village. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook the second. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes.
As you know, 8:40 is going through several areas of our county, and with that, the destruction of several homes. There was an, is an old home still sitting in the Burwood community that we feel like has some historic value. We looked, thinking there was a schoolhouse involved, maybe, but there was not. There are some old accessories there, such as the old beaten doors, and possibly the chimney, that we would like to be able to use. Bell and Associates has been nothing but cooperative, helpful, and willing. We are, of course, not allowed to get on the property or do any work without this commission's approval, and/or use any of our staff or any of the equipment. So we're seeking that approval, so we can get in the area, look over, and see what's worthy of being saved, and make the effort to save that. One note I would say, some of the family members have, who formerly lived there, have gone and have secured several things, and I think that's wonderful. And we will continue to make sure that we work with them so that they will have an opportunity for things that are very special and that they cherish. I think that's only appropriate, but we would like an opportunity, it's an old chimney, we'd like an opportunity to really see if we could relocate that.
Questions of Commissioner Hayes on 110927. Williamson County will have its own chimney.
Santa can come down.
110927, if you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Late File, 110928, resolution for endorsement for the county mayor to solicit requests for proposal for the lease of the old highway building and to authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement for the property. Commissioner Chaufonte, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell the second. This was just filed this evening, so. Did this go through your committee, Commissioner Hancock? No. If it did, you don't remember that one either. Commissioner Chaufonte, explanation, please.
That's a good question.
Mayor, come on up here and tell us what you're planning here, please, sir.
We got that one just under the wire to get it filed. It did not go before law enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we did ask Burke, because he serves on the Property Committee, to sign the resolution. This is a resolution we were talking about earlier, in the old Highway Department building on Columbia Avenue, to give us the opportunity to try to lease it out. We'll do an RFP on that. If we get some bidders on it, we'll try to lease that out for a couple of years, and then we'll, until we come up with a permanent solution, so we can get some revenue off from that building while it's sitting there, rather than it just running down.
Any questions? The mayor on 110928. I see none. If you're in favor of 110928, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Mr. Bean.
What, what? Vote. Oh. I was carrying out the sidebar over here.
Our senior citizens. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no. That concludes all of the business of our meeting tonight. Reminds you, we do not meet next month. Our next meeting will be the second Monday in January 2010, so wish y'all a very happy holidays, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Second. All in favor, say aye. We are in adjournment. Have a great evening.